Some in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. We're taking off the, downtown parking is still under discussion. There's some meetings that are going on with the city manager and the police and parking lot on the north side, so that's, we're gonna bring that back after there's some more conversation. And then, we also wanted to add our discussion, meet the, for our new chiefs, hopefully everything will go through for July 2nd, and the plan is to have a meet and greet at 4:00 PM and then swearing in at 4:30 for the community to come at 4:00 PM.
On July 2nd?
Yeah, Todd can talk about that on our discussion, so we just wanna add that. And, I don't know, are there any other changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Move Marle, second, Gearbo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we need a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Roth?
So moved.
Second.
Gearbo, second, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under citizen comments on agenda items, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and would you like to speak? Is requested by not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and the Peoples Express, I wanted to say that I definitely support it. I know there's an increase, and I gave Brian a piece of paper on our voucher system that is going to be used by seniors, I don't want to use all the time on that, so I support that. Also, I think our Relay for Life is this weekend, and we have done little to nothing, I don't think, to advertise it or put it on our Channel 18. Last thing is, the staff increases, appointments, I noticed that the staff has been very generous in foregoing a raise, but the cost of living is, I think, 2%. The 2%, of course, goes very high for the people that at the high totem pole. We have the best city clerk that there is, okay, but she's only getting 2%, and she's got election coming up and everything. What I'm basically saying, and I'll go backward because of time, I would like to see an across-the-board $1,000 for all staff, and, or whatever, because Diane has taken up, she has had a vacancy, she's working, Mickey Joe had got a budget together for you, and it's wonderful. And of course, then I will go into the highest, well, the second highest position, first after Todd, is our building engineering department. That is $103,000, and that's not counting with, I think it's 30-some thousand fringe benefits on top of that, city car. And years ago, we had a city superintendent that did both Mr. Fordice's and the building, and then it was split up. At this point, we doing a lot of outsizing with, we have people come in and watch the job because they're qualified with the engineering degree, and I think that private cars, other than the police chief and the city manager, should not be part of this fringe package. I think Diane, and I'm sorry, I'm picking, but she's wonderful, and she has, there's three people on staff that have just, and they got a big row ahead of them. And I know we're talking about the police department and consolidating and all that, but the place that we should be consolidating is the building and engineering department because we do not have the building permits, and we do not have the activity and the water and sewer connections that we had 10 years ago. And when you're talking, I know you've got a lot of things to address, but that definitely, one has two employees, and Mr. Fordice has 10.
Any other citizen comments? Under New Business Item 1299, 2012 Summer Fest and 5K Run, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 25th.
Consent, do you?
Oh, sorry. Upon consented, general norm will be adopted without discussion, over the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve as submitted.
Second.
Rhodes, second to Har. To approve as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business Item 1299, since the 2012 Summer Fest and 5K Run, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 25th, 2012 memo from Mark Trapp, and the application for community event use of public ways for Summer Fest, to acknowledge receipt of the May 29th, 2012 memo for interim police chief Lindman, the May 30th, 2012 memo from fire chief Hap, to end the June 12th, 2012 memo from public works director Fordice. To approve or not approve the 2012 Saline Summer Fest event downtown August 10th and 11th, 2012, utilizing city parking lot number one and number four relocation of the farmer's market to parking lot number two on August 11th, as well as using and or closing the public ways as described in Exhibit B. To approve or not approve the beer wine tent to be located in parking lot number four with licensing by the Saline Michigan Picnic in the Park, the set approvals for this event subject to the following: One, does the traffic engineer issue the required temporary traffic control orders for the street closings? Two, does the required permit to close the left turn lanes on US 12 and Ann Arbor Street be obtained from MDOT 3, that a certificate of liability insurance and liquor liability insurance be provided by Saline Michigan Picnic in the Park with the city as an endorsed additional insured party, and that all fees for city services for this event above normal time estimated at $3,010.96 be waived? We have a motion.
Move to approve and approve.
Second.
Har, second, Peters. Discussion. Mr. Rhodes?
I'd like to thank the organizers of the Summer Fest, it's another one of those special activities that goes on that makes our community so great, but I did want to respectfully request that the proper number of recycled containers be placed out and about around the various Summer Fest activities. Some months ago, the Environmental Commission had requested that a requirement be put into place that there be one recycled container for every two trash containers, and I'm not sure where that stands at the moment, but in any case, I'm sure that the individuals who are organizing Summer Fest will ensure that we've got plenty of recycled containers about. Thank you very much.
Mr. Peters?
I too just like to say thanks to all those who helped organize the Summer Fest, anybody that ever put one of these together knows how much work it really is, and it usually takes all year to put one together, so thank you, it does the community a great service.
Any further discussion on this motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12-100, this is Peoples Express Public Transportation Agreement, and actually, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that we have on our counter tonight a report on statistics of ridership, that was submitted today by Peoples Express, and also a letter from the Saline Area Senior Center in favor of this, so I'd like to add those two items to this motion, dated June 18th. So, the motion would be, the 12-100 Peoples Express Public Transportation Agreement should be motioned to acknowledge receipt of the June 14th, 2012 memo from public works director Fordice, the report from Peoples Express detailing ridership from 2009 through April 2012, and the letter from the Saline Area Senior Center dated June 18th, to approve or not approve the purchase of service agreement between Peoples Express and the City of Saline for a two-year period at a cost of $42,000 annually for public transportation services. To authorize or not authorize, mayor and clerk to execute the agreement after review and approval of the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Okay, so, any discussion on this motion? Mr. Campbell, oh, sorry, Mr. Gearbo.
Mr. Campbell's gonna talk about it first, so I'll wait until after that.
Okay, or is this Mr. Fordice, do you want to talk about it?
Sir, just as you were reading the motion, I noticed there was an error in there, that the price is $44,100.
That's what I thought. $44,100, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes, would you be willing to accept that change in the motion?
I agree to that correction.
Mr.?
Mr. Har.
Mr. Har. Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Fordice, you want to talk about, or Mr. Campbell, do you, who's up at that?
Jeff Cannon, I'll follow up with anything.
Actually, I have Wes Armbruster from Peoples Express is here, and he can speak mostly to the services that have been provided and the experience over the past four years.
Hello, and thank you for allowing us to provide transportation for the last few years for the City of Saline. We've been pretty lucky, it's been pretty gratifying for us, and also interacting with a number of the seniors and younger people and everyone else in the City of Saline. It has increased a little bit, we've went up 5% through the cost of gas and the cost of labor. In the last two years, we're, you know, we try to hold it down as much as we can, we're nonprofit, and we're trying to do the same thing here. As you know, there is a movement afoot with the county for countywide transportation, and there was a cover letter that we did send, that if, at any time, if this agreement is approved and the countywide transportation should be instituted, then as soon as you would like us to halt transportation, whatever we provide to you, we can do that right away. That would not be a problem. But, the figures of, for the last year, down a little bit, and some of the reporting, and some of that is due to the fact that a lot of the people who are transported to Ann Arbor, we use another, still our drivers and our vehicles to bring them back, because two years ago, you're requested that we would start servicing the Plymouth Road area, which has worked out real, real well, but one of the only ways you can do it is to have other transportation help bring them back. Same thing, Jackson Road area, we've done a lot more out there, a number of other doctors and of, in the Ann Arbor area that we now transport people to that we weren't before. But if you have any other questions, please feel free to ask, and I'll try and answer them, and...
Would there, your question be for Mr. Armbruster?
Yes, that was regarding the ridership and the totals that I'm looking at, looks like over the last three, the last two years, we've dropped significantly. What are you projecting for this year? Last year almost dropped 1,000 from 2010, and now it's 1267 for this year, but you anticipate it to be the same as last year, or do we have less riders in general?
Well, no, again, like I say, it is probably down somewhat, but a lot of the riders that we take to Ann Arbor in order to fully service the people in the City of Saline, we have to use one of our other drivers to bring them back, or you may have a situation where we have dialysis people on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, in the morning, and so, there are other people, which, those are popular times, that we have dialysis people, we have other drivers take them to Ann Arbor, and so we actually have more than one vehicle.
Okay, so that information's missing from this report, is what you're saying?
Is, I'm sorry.
I have this ridership report, so you're saying there's information about the number of riders missing from this report?
That portion would be, and Todd maybe can answer that a little bit more too, we tried to get a little more information from our accountant, and Todd had a chance to speak with him, and he might be able to clear some of that up too. Or not Todd, but I mean Jeff, I'm sorry.
One of the, one of the issues is, as we've expanded the service, as Wes was explaining, that some of our riders now get recorded on other systems, so, and I think in 2011 is when we really, that the extra service area started becoming more popular, and so trips that used to be two rides are now only, we're only catching one of them with the current reporting system, so I'm working with Peoples Express to try to come up with a better, real good number of how many people are really getting on this thing in Saline, and then coming back to Saline.
Yeah, that was kind of where I was wondering, maybe the reporting issue was a concern, because I noticed all the vouchers have dropped off of this report, and a lot of that activity, I didn't know how that had changed.
Right.
I'm just wanting to make sure that we're promoting this as much as we can, and, because it looks like it was effective, and then all of a sudden, it looks like a lot of riders have dropped off, so as long as we're achieving the same number of riders or more, then I'm good with this contract.
Mr. Rhodes?
Excuse me, the teen center contracts with Peoples Express for transport from the middle school down to the teen center during school year, are those numbers reflected in this count, do you know?
Yes, they are.
They are, okay. And that's, that's a direct pay from the teen center to Peoples Express?
Yes.
Yeah. Kind of following up on Mr. Gearbo's comments, I too am disappointed in the ridership numbers, because I think that generally speaking, the population of the community of Saline is not as aware of the service that you have as they could be. Last time that we did this same contract renewal, I had asked for some more concentrated publicity to go out, and I don't, I have not seen that, so, again, I would say that I think that we, you need to do a better job of publicizing the service that you have. Thank you.
Further question? On that same note, I had a couple of questions regarding, well, first of all, you have in here that you're in the process of establishing a website, do you have a timeframe for that?
I'm sorry?
A timeframe for establishing a website?
A website? Yes, we have a website.
Oh, you have it, because in the contract, it says you're establishing one.
It's Peoples Express, it's under that, yes.
Okay, so, when is the mo, you are trying to get people to register within 72 hours of their pickup? When is the shortest term that...
We do it the day of, if we can.
You do it the day of, if you can?
Yeah.
So, do you have that on your website and on your materials?
Yes, we do, and we, we do have a number, a great number of people, it's a little harder if it is out of town, but if it's in town, there's about a 99% chance that's gonna happen, but we take reservations with people right up to that day that want to go to the hospital, we'll, they'll leave it on our recorder at night, and we've always been able to work it out. Sometimes it's, they might have to wait a little bit or go a little bit earlier because of a conflict with other people, but so far, we've been able to work all that out.
Okay, I have the similar concern about the decrease in ridership, if anything, I think it should be increasing. One of my questions is, I see you have, you know, a lot of, for sure, it's the senior center organizations, but we do have some apartment complexes that I think, you know, have a management center that you could work with them, and then also, Todd, I don't know if we can put something on our, in our FYI, you know, I know we do that on occasion, but maybe we need to do it every quarter, make sure there's, you know, something there. And then my other question was, have you had any complaints, has the city received any complaints about the service? And have there been any complaints?
Jeff typically handles the contract, manages the contract, so typically, typically if complaints are received, they're received at his office, so I'm a true that.
Yeah, in the past year, actually, we've only had one complaint, and it was a situation where it was serviced to an area that was outside of the contract, and Peoples Express had been able to provide that service, and then there was a shift in their scheduling, and they were no longer able to do that special service.
Well, I appreciate the service, and I think it's very important for the community, I just would like to see increased ridership and figure out ways we can partner with you to make sure that citizens are aware of it, and also that, you know, that you do try to accommodate, you know, obviously, a lot of this is medical appointments, but I think there are probably other people in the community that might be using it more, if, you know, we could make it more publicity, and then, you know, not have the 72-hour requirement, you know, if there is some flexibility there, make sure that people understand that, and obviously, it's whether or not you can meet those needs, but I think that would might be help to bring the ridership up a little bit.
Hmm, okay.
And we probably need to change this contract, because it looks like the website's already been put up, so we want to make sure that that's on the city website also. Any other questions regarding this contract? So, we have a motion on the floor to approve and authorize at the cost of $44,100 with two additional attachments tonight. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1201, this will be a resolution supporting the ban on sale of synthetic intoxicants. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, supporting the ban on the sale of synthetic intoxicants in the City of Saline based on the danger of the substance to the health and safety of our citizens.
Move to approve and adopt. Support.
Move Marle, second, Rhodes, to approve and adopt. Discussion. Mr. Gearbo.
Where do we stand with, in effect, that the county's doing the same thing, the state's also doing the same thing, I just, how soon is the state gonna pass something similar to this? I just concerned that we put something in place, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have to change it, like, a month from now when the state approves it.
Sure, I think this is just a resolution supporting, but Chief, if you want to, my understanding from the discussions the Chief and I've had is that, I believe that either is the governor has signed or is gonna sign it, but it was gonna take effect, I believe, July 1st.
It's, the actual bill has been passed by both the House and Senate, and last I knew, was on the governor's desk. I'm not sure at this point whether it's been signed either. Speculation is that it'll take effect sometime in July, whether it's July 1st or not, I'm not sure on the date either. I've read some things that say once he signs, it'll take effect immediately, but I'm not positive on the exact timeframe.
So, is the assumption we still need to convince him to sign it, even though I think, I'm just curious why we're doing this when already it's gonna probably be law, so, anyways, I understand the importance of this, but I know everyone's doing it, and I think we're gonna have a law in place, so, it's kind of like after the fact, so, anyways.
Yeah, I think it's more a show of support, kind of stand in solidarity, if you will, type of thing, that, to support the county as well as the state, and...
Okay, I just wanted to know where the standing was, it sounds like it's already in effect, we're just kind of drumming, beating the drum again for something that's already in place, thanks.
Further discussion? Mr. Marle?
Yeah, just to elaborate on what the Chief articulated, my understanding is, once the governor signs it, it becomes law almost immediately, and my anticipation is, he will sign it sometime this week. And to Mr. Gearbo's concerns, I think they're certainly legitimate, but my interpretation of this motion is similar to that of Mr. Campbell's, which is it's showing solidarity and support for action taken by the legislature, and hopefully, action that's taken by the governor later this week. So, I do think it's important, and of course, as the mover of the motion, I enthusiastically endorse this, this motion, item 12-101. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? I have a motion on the floor to approve and adopt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a motion of convenience to close session for the purpose of conducting a personnel evaluation of the city manager, which is requested by the city manager, the city council will reconvene to regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Gearbo, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Chahar? And Roll Call, please. Councilmember Gearbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Marle?
Aye.
Councilmember Chahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth is absent. Mayor Driscoll?
Yes. You'll adjourn the closed session at 7:56. 8:16. Item 12-102, staff appointments and contracts for fiscal year 2012 to 2013. We need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 5th, 2012 memo from C-Manager Campbell, and the June, January 5th, 2012 letter from Attorney Grossman regarding retainer for legal services for fiscal year 2012 to 2013.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Rhodes, second. Gearbo? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve or not approve the classification and compensation grid, planned grid, effective July 1, 2012, indicating a 2% qual increase for fiscal year 2012 to 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
Gearbo, second. Chahar? Discussion? Mr. Gearbo.
The reason why I'm moving this is because we made a compromise in attempt to try and provide for a more futuristic, futuristic look at controlling our benefits, and basically, in terms of the retirement, so, although we're giving them a 2%, we're also asking for a cut, which in the long run will be more beneficial for us, I believe in making sure that staff are compensated properly, and I also believe that it doesn't make sense to do a complete hit on everyone when they've given in the last couple of years, where we haven't seen so much given from other sections of our staff and union. So, at this point, I think this is a good way to approach it, and I think everybody's contributing, and also trying to offset all the needs of the city. Thanks.
Further discussion? I would also agree with Mr. Gearbo, I think we have a great staff, and we are trying to negotiate for the future, and we have done a significant amount of staff transition, reorganization to about 20%, I think, rate ultimately of employment cuts, or non-replacement, so, a lot of people are doing a lot more work, so, I definitely agree with, we're trying to figure out a way to recognize this work at the same time addressing our benefit situation, so, this is, it seemed like a good compromise for this year, so, any further discussion? So, we have a motion to approve the compensation grid, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number C, this will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing staff and saving the compensation for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
So moved.
Peters? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Rhodes? To do what?
Approve.
Did you say that?
Approve.
I didn't catch it. Just want to make sure. Okay, discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor to approve and adopt the resolution as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, this will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing city officers for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, to acknowledge receipt and reading of ordinance number 744, an ordinance to amend the Saline City Code fixing the current compensation of appointed officials, and to approve and adopt or not adopt said ordinance number 744 as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt, and approve and adopt.
Rhodes, to approve and adopt, and approve and adopt. We have a second?
Second.
Second, Chahar? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, this is a motion to approve or not approve the employment contracts with appointed staff and officers for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor, clerk, and city manager to execute the employment contracts as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Chahar, second. Marle, to approve and authorize. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 15, 2012 memo from C-Manager Campbell regarding proposed employment agreement for Larry Hrenick, to approve or not approve the employment contract with Larry Hrenick for the period of July 20, July 2, 2012 through June 30, 2013, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor, clerk, and city manager to execute the employment contract as submitted.
Move to authorize and, or approve and authorize, excuse me.
Support.
Move Marle, second. Rhodes? Discussion? All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just, under this motion, I would like to comment, as we were talking earlier, that the employees and at City Hall, actually, for the city, across the city, but specifically at City Hall, which is what we're really talking about right here, are very high caliber, and as Mrs. Hess discussed, we are very fortunate to have people that work for the city and that are really dedicated and committed to service, especially through these really trying times. We've been through a lot, we're continuing to go through a lot, and everybody has been really working hard together, I think we've all worked hard together to try to address some situations that are not within our control, and I think, I just wanted to say, I can't say thank you enough times for everything that all the employees do, they make our city what it is, and it's a very special place to live and work, so, thank you to all the employees, if you could pass that on, please, to our staff. If you could pass that on, please, to our, to our staff, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, item twelve one oh three, MERS Resolution, Staff-E employee Contribution to Retirement Plan. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June fifth, twenty-twelve memo from C. Manager Campbell regarding general administration and non-union, non-staff MERS contribution. To approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution for changing MERS benefits for an employee contribution rate of three percent for general administration and non-union, non-staff employees effective July one, twenty-twelve. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Move Gearbox, do we have a second?
Support.
Second, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Campbell, do you have any, wanna report on this, or, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Uh, sure. Excuse me. Um, this is the, the procedural step, as we talked about during the budget process, of the, uh, three percent, um, contribution for all non-union employees that, uh, um, are, they qualify for pension through MERS. Um, so, this is three percent of, of the gross wage, uh, contribution. Um, and again, like you said, that, that would go into effect as, if passed as proposed, would be July first, uh, for the fiscal year thirteen, at three percent.
Any questions or comments, council? Okay. All in favor to approve and adopt, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And do we have any commissioner, community reports from council members? Mr. Tuhar?
Yes, um, thank you. The, um, Arts and Culture Committee met on Monday, June eleventh, and, um, continued to thank council for approval of the sculpture walk, um, and currently, um, is working with Mr. Fordice on coordinating the, uh, installation, um, work for the sculptures. And tentatively, we plan, hope, to have everything ready to go for some kind of dedication or initial celebration at Summerfest.
Great. And the other commissioner, Mr. Marle?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements, uh, in my capacity as, um, uh, city liaison to the, um, Celine Area Senior Center Executive Board. The first of which is, there will be an event on June the twenty-seventh, which is a Wednesday, at the Celine District Library from nine fifteen to ten fifteen. It's a senior open house, um, and seniors are invited, and the program will feature tours, books, book talks, excuse me, and refreshments. It's a great way to learn about, uh, the library and get acquainted with, um, downloadable books. Refreshments will also be served. The, the one caveat is that a registration is required, um, and seniors may register by calling the main phone line at the library, which is four two nine, fifty-four, fifty. The second, which is very timely, since we approved, uh, a, a contract with People's Express, uh, this evening, is that the senior center received a grant, um, from the United Way, um, which provides for a transportation voucher for People's Express. So, if seniors are interested, uh, in the program, or if they would like to see if they qualify, um, they're encouraged to contact our executive director, Rena, and she can be reached by phone at the senior center's main line, which is four two nine, ninety-two, seventy-four. Thank you.
Are there any other commission reports, or? Mr. Peters?
Uh, just a reminder that only twenty-four days till, uh, the seventeenth, Celine Celtic Festival. We'll have, uh, on the July thirteenth is pub night, and it's a five dollar cover to get in, and July fourteenth, uh, be all-day festival. It's ten dollars in advance and fifteen dollars at the gate. Of course, we'll have our, our five K run early in the morning. Our opening ceremonies will be organized by, by our own, Mr. Brian Marle. Uh, Highland athletes, Celtic survivor, chousting, done by insane people on large horses. These guys are incredible, if you wanna see something exciting. Reenactment, uh, We Folks, pipe bands, uh, some of the music this year, we have three excellent bands coming. We have Eileen Iverson's coming, and Eileen Iverson's did music for Titanic, the movie. If you ever saw that movie, that, that, that's her work. Uh, the Tartan Terrors, who are very entertaining, they'll be there. They have a couple of world champion bagpipers, and they have kind of a, an Irish Celtic rock sound to them. We have Seven Nations, which is new this year, and they have sort of a fusion rock sound to their, to their music. We also have Rant Maggie Rant, uh, the Moxies, uh, Beth Patterson, some others, the Celine re, uh, Fiddler's Restrum. So, some of the best music you'll find anywhere, certainly in, uh, the upper Midwest, maybe United States that day. So, again, that's July thirteenth and fourteenth, Celine Celtic Festival. Come on down, join us, pray for, uh, for no rain, good weather. Thank you.
Any other, uh, committee reports? Any reports and announcements? June twenty-third is, uh, Sports Cars to Celine, that would be the Saturday, correct? Is that in the afternoon?
Three, three to nine. Yeah, yep.
Okay. Mr. Gearbox?
I just wanted to mention that I was able to enjoy both the movie and the park this week and the, um, summer music series uptown, and we had a good turnout at both, and I encourage everyone to go to those, because they are really unique, and you get to see a lot of people that you normally wouldn't see, and everybody just hangs out and has a good time.
Okay. And there were reports and announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Just, um, a query. We're going to, some of us are gonna tour the Faricia Plant in Fraser next Monday.
Right.
And I was wondering who's driving and who's not.
I think we need to coordinate that with, can you get Justine to send out a group email?
Right. Uh, we can do that again, yeah. We, we had a bunch of volunteers, so we'll, I will have that done tomorrow and determine who wants to drive or not drive, or, that most, I think, over half, um, just said that they could drive, so, so we'll, we'll get two or three cars, depending on, um, the size of the cars and how many people, so, and we'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay. And then you wanna talk about the first day for the new chief?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as, as Mayor Driscoll mentioned, uh, at, at the beginning of the, uh, council meeting, uh, Larry Renick, his first day on the job will be July second. Again, given the, making the assumptions at the background check and, uh, physical and everything, he'll, he'll have, hopefully, that be, will be done by the end of this week or, uh, uh, first of next week. Excuse me. Um, so, assuming all those things come back fine, um, which I'm expecting them to, but anyway, uh, he would start on July, Monday, July second, and he will be, or he'll be officially sworn in by, uh, City Clerk Hill in the morning, so he can actually be the police chief. And then we'll have a, uh, some of you may recall, when I started, uh, four and a half years ago, we had a, my first day, we had a meet and greet about four o'clock, where people could come in, and, um, we'll do the same thing, and then at four thirty, we'll have a ceremonial swearing-in for him, where, where Diane will, will do the same. Um, so, come on out and invite your friends and come out and, and meet the new police chief, and, and, uh, so we're excited to, uh, for him to be started.
Um, I had a, well, I, I'm planning on going to Traverse City on Wednesday. Because Diane's gonna be up there. And the reason Diane's gonna be up there is, she's getting an award for being the twenty-twelve City Clerk of the Year, which means she's... This is with the Michigan Association of Clerks, so that means that all the cities, which there's, I think, five hundred something cities. Do you know how many cities there are? I know there's five hundred and thirty-five cities and villages, so I'm not really sure how many cities there are, 'cause there is a village, but there's...
They get to vote on all of them.
There's quite a bit of cities that you, clerks that you compete with. And I just wanted to say, what an honor it's been to work with Diane over the years. I know she's pulled some people's, they, she's saved some people's necks, just put it that way, and put it discreetly. Um, not only here in the city, but across the county. So, um, she's a true professional, and it's been an honor to work with you. And I'm looking forward to having a chance to say congratulations in Traverse City, and I understand you're gonna be there with your family and some other people in the department, so it's a well-deserved award.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Um, do we have any other discussion items? Mr. Rhodes?
One other item I forgot to mention earlier. On Saturday, July twenty-first, nine o'clock in the morning, we will have the rollout of the big red barrel. Won't actually roll, though, because it's square, but it's, this is the, the first installation of a red barrel in Washtenaw County, and its purpose is to provide a safe, controlled place for individuals to dispose of their expired and unneeded, unused medications, including those with controlled substances. The, um, Environmental Commission has supported this. Uh, PAT, Parents and Community Together has supported it. Our Police Department has, and I think there's a couple of other organizations. So, on that Saturday at nine o'clock in the morning, and that, I should say, the red barrel will be permanently mounted, um, in our lobby, right in front of the police, uh, station, because it has to be under supervision at all times, either from an individual or by camera. And, um, we, we anticipate that we might get some coverage from one of the Detroit television stations, since this is the first one in Washtenaw County. So, put it all in your, in your books, if you would. July twenty-first, nine o'clock in the morning, and we should have as many city council people in attendance as possible, as well as other city staff and, um, the general public.
Is there any other discussion items? Mr. Campbell?
I just wanted to make note, uh, for those that, that have come accustomed to seeing Lisa Almendinger cover our, our, uh, meetings for the last, what, thirteen years or so? Yeah. This is, uh, this will be her last meeting. As she's hanging, well, she's leaving, uh, Amber dot com, and she's gonna hang out her own shingle, as they say. So, I don't know if, if you wanted to, if you wanted to say a couple of things, maybe? You always get to ask those questions and...
Wait a minute. I'm not supposed to be the one that, uh...
She went the other foot.
But if, well, if nothing else, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I know she's, she's done a good job for many years, and, uh, certainly appreciate, uh, um, her trustworthiness and, and, um, being able to discuss, uh, issues with her, and, and, so, um, I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything, but just, uh, for those that you are aware, she's, uh, we're gonna, so I, my, my first question there was, so who do we get to break in now, so?
I don't know. It's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure to cover the city. It's a wonderful place. It's a great place to, uh, work, live, and play. I think I've heard that a few times, but, um, you're not rid of me yet. You never know. You know that.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Do, under public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Mary Hess. The ordinance seven forty-four has been amended, and I am requesting, of course, I don't know what public papers it will be put in, or if it will be put on our FYI, or if it will be put on, uh, but it is an ordinance, and I think they normally are printed. Uh, the other thing, I, I guess I'm a little disappointed as a survivor of cancer and losing quite a few family members, and I think everyone's been touched by cancer, that there was no comment on the relief for life.
Is there a further citizen comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, uh, Manager Campbell, and our most distinguished Alan Grossman. It's a pleasure for me to be here. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the project that we completed this week, uh, past week, at the cemetery. On Monday of last week, I went up and took pictures of the site and everything around, and we got started at seven o'clock on Tuesday. We had to make our day a little short, because Robinson Bond Miller had a funeral at, uh, four thirty. So, we started again on Tuesday, and on Wednesday, we worked a long day, and then Thursday, we were able to get all of the crypt set. And then on Friday, backfield compacted with, uh, topsoil, screeded topsoil, and seeded and installed straw. And I began to water the straw and the grass, because part of the agreement was, uh, that I would do that, and I volunteered that I would take the time to, with the instructions from the DPW, to where to get the water and how to run the water hose, uh, and so, I've been doing that, but of course, yesterday and today, we didn't need any water. But you will see me at the cemetery, making sure that the grass grows and we don't get any runoff. Uh, there was a couple of concerns this week, uh, I want to bring to your attention and clarify. I know some of you were contacted by Mary Hess about the monument that I did move, uh, and I did speak with Mary on Wednesday, when she was doing one of her tours through the cemetery, and I did ask her why she didn't call me directly or speak to me when she walked through on Wednesday and asked me about the monument, if she had some concerns about it. The monument in question was my brother-in-law, which is buried, was buried eight years ago in our family plot, uh, and it was necessary to move that stone, not only to protect it, but the foundation had settled, and I wanted to pour a new foundation. And then on Friday evening, when I came back and showed my wife the finished product, Mary was also at the cemetery, and I asked her if there was anything that I could help her with, and she had some concerns that I had been watering the grass on Friday, um, and she had some concerns that if there was a fire, that, uh, there wouldn't be adequate water to put out a fire in the city of Celine. I did reassure her that Celine has adequate water, and that was not a concern. She also voiced a concern that her water rates had tripled, uh, and I was using the city water to water a cemetery plot that was part of the agreement. Uh, I will keep track of the times that I water, uh, and if someone from the city, when I'm completed and the, and the grass is up and mature, uh, I will give you the times that I've watered, the amount of times, and I would be more than happy to reimburse the city, uh, for that water consumption. I wanna thank Diane and congratulate her, uh, Gary Roball, the city engineer, um, Public Works Director, Jeff Fortis, and Dan Bennett, because we all worked together this week to complete this project, and it went very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments?
One law, five two one, Canterbury Drive. Just real quick, again, since I did work with Diane, uh, while I was on council, I want to extend my congratulations to her. Certainly a well-deserved award, and, um, I'll be up in Traverse City, but not for that reason, but, um, good wishes and best wishes to you, Diane, and thank you for all you do for the city and for the entire staff. They do a great job. Thank you.
Is there any other citizen comments? If not, we have, um, any other business to come before the city council? If not, we have our next meeting July ninth at seven thirty, and we need a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-nine.
So moved?
Second.
Gearbox, second Marle, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.